Ready when you are, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And with that, I would like to call the November seventeen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five, special meeting of the Genoa Charter Township Board as requested by trustees Ryber and Hovarter to order. If you would, please stand and join me for the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight seeking clarity and direction. Please help us all to see the path forward as we navigate uncharted waters. We ask that you remove confusion and doubt and guide all of us with your wisdom. May you grant us the strength to overcome the challenges before us and make decisions that will align with your will. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please stay standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I get a roll call? Clerk Susie.
Sure. Walker.
Here.
Ryber.
Here.
Hunt.
Here.
Susie.
Here.
Hovarter.
Here.
Spicer.
Here.
Okay, we have quorum. At five oh two P M., I would like to open the call to the public. Just a reminder, the call to the public comment period is limited to three minutes per person. Please address all comments to the chair. Ready?
Good evening, Colleen Quinn, four oh four two Brookstone Court. When I saw the posting on the website for this meeting, I felt compelled to attend and speak again, as I was uncomfortable with how the last two meetings played out, specifically Janine being dismissed during the one meeting, and the irregular, in my opinion, selection of a new clerk. I am not quite sure the purpose of this meeting, however, I sincerely hope the intent is not to try to drag Janine through the mud. Again, it was not just Janine's departure, but Tabitha's as well that concerns me. I also received a letter of formal notice of procedural and legal irregularities, which is very concerning. I must admit that many of the issues cited in that letter corresponded to my concerns. For example, the restriction of nominations and limited board participation. As a retired H R professional, your process was rushed, and you did not fully evaluate the candidates. You obviously pre-selected trustee Soucy, and the fix was in. The whole deal regarding the need for someone to sign paychecks was totally disingenuous. For one thing, Janine stated in her resignation letter that she would be willing to remain until November fifth. Had you allowed that, you would have not been in the self-inflicted bind you found yourself in. It was a classless move to dismiss her during that meeting. I recommend that you develop a strategic backup plan for the future, because it is crazy to think that our clerk selection was rushed and faulty because someone needs to sign checks. I don't buy it. You dismiss the applicants without a second glance. That wasn't right, and you can't put perfume on this pig. I don't know who all applied or their qualifications, but I do know that Debbie McCormick applied and that she certainly warranted consideration. I also know that multiple people have been investigating recall efforts for Todd, Robin, and Kevin. This entire situation could have been and should have been handled differently. Optics are so important, and you guys as a board, you all need to be above reproach. Unfortunately, that isn't the case. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen.
Roger Deaton, Genoa Township, resident who votes. Six nine nine Sunrise Park Street. My family and I worked on each and every one of your campaigns to get you elected. Clerk Deaton came to you for over a year bringing you issues, and you failed to act upon them. You should be ashamed of yourselves. Next election, I will not make the same mistake twice.
Good evening, Stephanie Booth, City of Howell. So, like I said, I was at the Scolaris trial, and, you know, the jury selection was kept private from the public, so that was a highly irregular process, unrelated to this entirely, but I want it on public record, because I found the outcome to be dismaying. I know it was a jury trial. Going back to that, back in April or March of twenty-four, it seems Polly, or maybe not her specifically, nearly five hundred votes were attempted to be, or excuse me, voter role, Q V R. Forgive me if I forget the acronym. However, like an active Air Force vet was taken off the voter role, and that was not coming from the media. That was coming from a nonpartisan group, the League of Women Voters. Don't complain when someone exercises their free speech and right to go to the media when they're working in a toxic environment. That's their only recourse, it seems. So, you know, I found that offensive to, like, complain about someone exercising their First Amendment right as a, just an American citizen. Yeah, and going back to the previous, the first speaker, yeah, that was very irregular to just use the pretense of, oh, we need these checks signed, we need to, you know, get ourselves paid, and I understand that, but that was not right, and anyone could see the problem. It was a pretense, I believe. She either could have stayed to sign them, or perhaps you could have gone to the county clerk. I don't know what the rules are, but there's got to be a procedure, and I found that an excuse. Okay, lastly, around the thirty-one, thirty-two minute mark at the November fifth meeting, these two gentlemen here at the far end passed each other a note, whether it's legal or appropriate or not. It was worth noting, I mean, I saw the body language, and it was, to me, just questionable. And I spoke against the asphalt plant, so let's stop the self-dealing, and that was another case of a, the person's no longer on the board, but I think they, the person who wanted to sell it, which, you know, he had, or they donated to his campaign, so we need to take this stuff out of politics, the self-dealing conflicts of interest, and it's very transparently, you know, inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Well, I'm here to speak on two behalves, one being a person who lives in this area and another person who also applied for that job. First of all, I've lived here twenty-nine years. We've had the same clerk all that time. We managed to have the same clerk, and I think we held a record in Michigan for having a clerk for the longest amount of time. What was it, thirty-eight years? So, in a matter of a year, this group has managed to lose us not only a clerk, but the whole department. So that alarms me and upsets me. As a person in this area, turnover like that says a lot about human resources in whatever capacity you're using to function as a board. It's not working. It's not working, you're not working together, and the things that you're doing are costing the taxpayers money. If we end up in litigation over this stuff, it's going to cost us a lot of money. Okay, now I'm going to talk like someone who would like to have that job, and not because I want to have that job, because I want to save our district, the humiliation we're enduring because of all this township nonsense. We've managed to violate how many different rules, from how many different organizations, in this piece of information that was sent to me about all that went down. So if we're all doing our job, I don't think we should be violating the Michigan Charter Township Act, the Public Offenders and Employee Ethics Act, the Open Meetings Act, which I don't think any of the people on this board understand it. Now, the people that maybe have been here a while, the people that are new aren't understanding how it's supposed to work, because we're not having proper meetings. You're saying information, and then you close it down, and that's it. At the end, nobody gets to come and challenge you. That's our right as voters. This whole system that you have set up here is not working, and we're going to be suffering as a result of it. I tried to step in before you made your decision. I had no idea what your decision was. I said, "Look, I'm going to give you a little bit of information from what I learned," and I was new on a board. I'm not saying it's easy, but what you're doing now is causing trouble, legal trouble, big trouble. This is not right. I tried to say, "Hey, let me tell you how we did it," and it keeps you from reproach. It makes things, everything transparent. But you chose not to do that. You chose not to do it. I don't know what to do to help you if you won't help yourself, because that's, it's not working out. This is not working out. We, we're, as an area, we have people flooding out here, and we can't even tell them that their vote's going to be safe and taken care of, because we don't have a department there right now. We have no one. We have a new person who doesn't know anything, so I don't know how you're improving anything. I'm just frustrated, and I'm hoping you guys are gonna, if you don't do anything to remedy this, and if the information and the legal advice you're getting is not correct, then you better check it out and do something about it, because we're taking the rap for it. Our taxes will go up. We will be.
Time.
Somehow have to pay for these bad decisions, so please, think.
Thank you, Deb.
Good evening, Jim Carpenter, forty-seven fifteen Still Meadow. Number one, thank you for having this meeting tonight. In the last meeting that we had together, I called for an investigation, basically, to say what happened. We lost two, basically, the whole department, and we don't know why. There was allegations out there. We don't understand if they're true or not. Usually, it's someplace in the middle. So what I'm hoping to hear today is what some of those things were, what the investigation showed, and what corrective action has been taken. As someone who's lived in the corporate world for my career, hostile work environment is taken incredibly serious, and I've personally been involved in several cases where people have been fired. And it doesn't mean sexual harassment. In one particular case, it was because one supervisor asked one person to fill out a time card, and nobody else had to. Just that little thing is enough to get somebody fired. So what I'm hoping doesn't happen tonight is that you guys come up here and say that Janine and Tabitha were completely a hundred percent at fault, and there was no issues in this building at all, and we're just going to move on. That, to me, will not be an acceptable answer, and I think that the citizens deserve a better answer than that. Secondly, I do agree that we kind of rushed with Rick. I don't necessarily have a problem with him as a clerk, but we seem to do it in a big, big hurry. I hope he turns out to be the best clerk we've ever had. But I noticed in the meeting minutes that for the next meeting, we're going to talk about qualifications for the trustee. We never had that same meeting for qualifications for the clerk. So to me, we kind of got the horse before the cart on that one, and that we should have taken the time necessary to make sure that everyone in this room understood what the qualifications were and how Rick satisfied that need, and I hope he does. But we seem to be going through to see who's going to be the new Rick, and in the trustee department is spending a lot of time for it, while arguably that's not nearly as critical position as the clerk. So I hope to hear good things tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else that would like to speak more, apparently?
Hi, Deborah Beatty, three one zero nine Pineview Trail. I told you last time I was very disappointed that Janine felt the need to resign. I don't know Janine personally, I just know what, the good things that she's done in that short time that she's been here. And knowing that she's been a real estate agent, and I looked up her stats on that, and over twenty years, in the same, in the same office, I was a real estate agent, so I know you deal with a lot of people as a real estate agent, from inside your own office, your brokers, other agents, title people, insurance inspectors, buyers and sellers. You are dealing with people all day, and you are in an office situation, and she's been in that situation for over twenty years. So what the board is trying to make us think is that Janine was successful, because they didn't throw her out, she's been a successful agent, but all of a sudden, she turned into a jerk. Well, we're not buying that, and we need a better explanation, because it can't be Janine's a hundred percent wrong, and everybody else is a hundred percent right. That's, that's just not the way things work. So we're not happy until we hear the full accounting of what happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
Good afternoon, my name is Kristin Zapienza, representing the Genoa Township staff. We, the employees of Genoa Township, are writing collectively to share our perspective on recent statements suggesting that the township office is a toxic work environment. As the individuals who work here every day, we want to make it clear that this is not our experience. Our office is built on stability, cooperation, and longstanding commitment. The average tenure of our staff is over seventeen years, something that simply does not happen in a toxic workplace. Employees remain because they feel respected, valued, and part of a team that functions more like a family. We support one another, communicate openly, and take pride in serving the residents of Genoa Township. Under the current leadership, our workplace has continued to strengthen. Management has implemented regular staff meetings and anonymous complaint line to ensure all voices can be heard safely, and they consistently conduct township business with professionalism, compassion, and respect towards employees, residents, and the board. The current leadership has more than twenty-five years of experience in township government, which is reflected in the stability and organization of our, of our office. While no, no organization is without challenges, our office operates with integrity, collaboration, and a genuine commitment to public service. The support we give one another is the foundation of the strong, reliable service that residents expect and deserve. The individuals repeating claims of toxicity have never spent meaningful time in the office, nor have they spoken with the employees who work here each day. Their assertions are not based on the day-to-day reality of our team. It appears that outside influences may be driving these rumors, rather than firsthand knowledge or genuine concern for the employees who serve this community. We respectfully ask the township board to consider the perspective of those who know the environment best, the staff who have dedicated nearly, nearly two decades of their careers to the residents of Genoa Township. We ask that you stand with us, recognize the positive and supportive workplace we've built, and can support the continued leadership and teamwork that allow us to serve our residents effectively. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Kristin. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, and with that, I will close the call to the public as of five nineteen P M. I would entertain a motion on the regular agenda.
Motion to amend the regular agenda to the agenda that was originally requested when I requested this special meeting. Clerk Susie has the right to decide the time and location of special meetings. He does not have the right to revise an agenda that I put together. I would like to know who on this board, and it wasn't me, that suggested that I don't know what I'm talking about and decided to replace my words on this agenda that went out to the public.
Oh, do me.
That is a bad call, Kevin. What gives you the authority? What gives you the authority?
Our policies and procedures that we passed at the February seventeenth meeting? Are you aware whose meeting this is? So you called this your meeting? Do you know whose meeting this is? This is all of our meetings. This is the Board of Trustees meeting.
Watch what's happening right here.
Okay, well, I'm just explaining to you, you said this was your meeting. This is not your meeting. This is all of our meeting.
It is not my meeting with that agenda. You, sir, are a hundred percent correct. One hundred percent correct.
Except you're one hundred percent wrong. The supervisor sets the agenda for all township board meetings. It's in our policies.
Okay.
And there's one word you seem to be hung up on. It's your exact agenda just formatted in our standard form.
It's my exact agenda. No, I think the gentleman back here, Jim Carpenter, said that he, one of the first words out of his mouth was investigation.
Yeah, and we said discussion, because this is a discussion. We don't, are we, do we have the ability to investigate right here at this table?
You, you know what? This investigation should have been done months ago. If you want to wait until do it right now, tonight, out in public.
This investigation was done months ago.
It was.
I have gone through extensive pains to try to protect those involved who refuse to protect themselves.
Okay, so where is the result of that investigation? I'm, as a member of the board, haven't been made aware of that. Rick, have you? That there's been an investigation? Do you know what the results were? Robin?
What type of investigation are you looking for?
Yeah, I'm on site.
What's that?
I'm on site. I see every day.
Okay, so to answer your question, Bill, when allegations were made, I personally spent time with people in the office, asking them about those allegations. There's been no record of any complaints made, there was no record of anything that was made aware of to them, that there was a complaint going on. There was nothing to investigate.
Other than claims by an elected official, duly elected here, that there was, and I'm going to use her words, toxic environment, and that people were working against her, I don't know, to make her fail. I don't dismiss those outright, okay? I stood up here.
Did you talk to anybody in the office at any time about those allegations? Any employee, period?
I talked to Janine, because she was the one that was forced out of here.
She was not forced out.
Okay, Bill, real quick. So in your email, you have stated that the former clerk was forced out of the office. Do you know the only ways a member can be removed from this board?
I think somebody mentioned recall. Is that correct?
Order of the governor.
That's why.
Direct recall of the electors as a popular initiative, and the only other way out of the duties you accepted is to quit. You cannot be forced out. None of us can force anybody out of this position.
Okay, I'm going to tell you something, Kevin. Pick a boulder, any boulder, Mount Everest, tap on it with a teaspoon enough times, and you're going to break it. And that's what she alleges has happened here over months and months and months. I just, this was my agenda, it was regarding an investigation, okay? What does, what does a discussion have different than an action item audit? There is no action in discussion. We're going to sit here and talk and talk and talk. Okay? Action is needed. My agenda was an action item. I don't know what the people think about it, but this was purposely manipulated. Kevin might have the right to do it, but there was an intent. That's all I'm going to say.
Can I interrupt here? There's a motion on the table.
And I had a motion to amend. My motion was to amend the agenda, but I want to say something else, too. The difficulty that I had to schedule this, this meeting, let me tell you what happened. I read our section two point two on special meetings. It requires two board members or the supervisor to hold this meeting. Right away, the first thing out of the gate was I was violating the Open Mission, Open Meetings Act. The second thing right out of the gate was I get a, Robin forwards my email that wasn't originally to Kelly, but she's asking for Kelly's expertise, and what I get was, your request was not in writing. Okay, this is a roadblock. This is to stall. If I write an email, dag gumming, it's in writing. Okay, I don't, I write emails every day, hundreds of them, in an office. So that was a tactic right there. Okay, now we get over to here, and this is not my agenda, this is, this is not my agenda. It's been manipulated. And this is a board that ran on transparency. This is my right to say what I want to, but there's going to be no votes, there's going to be no action taken.
So in your email, did you intend for there to be an action taken?
What did my agenda say? Just read my agenda. Verbatim, please. That's the way I would like it read.
It's your agenda. Read it.
One moment, please.
I'm sorry, these women came in here, like, and they're using the upward, and I'm, I've got, I'm trying to watch them.
These are the employees that are exemplary.
Are you saying they're not?
I'm just saying they seem to be comfortable using the F-word in public, and these are supposed to be fine and standing. I'm not trying to personally insult anybody.
You're doing a good job of it, for not trying.
Thank you.
I second Bill's motion about changing the wording.
Okay, what are you changing it to?
Give me just a minute, please. Not that anybody out here already doesn't have it, I just have to find my email.
I don't, I have the agenda for the meeting.
While you're looking for that, just for clarification to the township attorney, the way it is written is, yes, two trustees can call a meeting, which they did, but the actual agenda isn't whoever called the chair. It is just a request for the meeting. It doesn't turn it into their meeting.
Correct. You've, you've made a couple of statements.
I did, sorry.
The statute says that two members of the board, other than the supervisor, can call, ask for a special meeting.
Right.
Once that happens, and if it's in writing, the obligation then falls on to the clerk to send out the time. to send out the time, place, and notice of the special meeting.
Which happened.
And that's what happened. Then statute makes the supervisor, you know, presiding member over the meeting, and then the statute also, there's a statute that also says that the entity, the board, can make up its own policies and procedures. So I was provided a copy of the township's policies and procedures, and it's, I believe, section 1.01 that says the supervisor sets the agenda. And you're correct, it's not any one or two persons' meeting, this is the meeting of the board of the Charter Township of Genoa.
So you requested what my agenda was. This is a letter I sent, the exact same email individually, to each member on the board here. Board members, and this is getting to it, our last clerk complained of continual receiving pushback from personnel at the township when she made requests to the point that she was pushed out of office. Here is an example of that same pushback. Somebody taking it upon themselves to alter my meeting, I mean, my agenda, my meeting, my meeting agenda, my meeting, my agenda, my right as a trustee. Is this an attempt to push me out, too? That's not happening. The agenda for the meeting that I requested was, and I quote, "investigation into events leading up to former clerk Janine Deaton's departure." I thought that meant, that kind of got the spirit of what our, our people out here wanted, an investigation. Okay? I made the motion to, up to amend the agenda that is out there on the screen to this agenda, and I had it a seconded.
Kevin, give them the wording. Go ahead and give us the wording.
I just did. I'll repeat it again.
Please do.
Investigation into events leading up to former clerk Janine Deaton's departure.
Excellent. So I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? I think we're gonna need a roll call on this one. Clerk Susie?
Horvard.
Yes?
Walker.
Yes.
Ryber.
Yes.
Hunt.
Yes.
Susie.
Yes.
Spicer.
No.
Okay. So, give us your amended, amended agenda.
Are we in discussion?
What's that?
Are we in discussion?
We are in discussion. So, real quick, I'm gonna go ahead and lead off.
Wait a minute, we have to approve the agenda now.
Yeah, we do actually have to.
Make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll second it.
That's what we just went.
That's what we just did.
That's what we just did.
We just approved the amended agenda, so we're gonna, we are gonna follow your agenda.
Thank you.
You do understand that it's not your meeting, though, correct?
No comment.
Okay, well, that's, you, you really need to know whose meeting it is.
The Township Attorney just made it clear that it is not.
So what I am passing out is, I'd conducted an investigation. I'm passing this out to members of the board, and Kelly, you could have a copy as well. I've got additional copies here for people. This is, this is what you're going to read, which you, and I don't have enough, so please, if you, if you take those.
He cannot direct.
Yeah, Bill?
Bill, you can't do that.
What's the problem?
You don't hand materials out to the public. You could make a public available.
Gotcha.
That I've done.
Gotcha, dude. Or, this is discussion, I'm presenting the results of my investigation right here. These are facts.
Okay, the chairperson, though, under the statute, presides over the meeting and adopts the rule, and the board adopted the ruling. I know of no law that says, you know, you can start passing things out and yet being your investigation. I don't know if the board.
Well, I guess it's the board's investigation. I was corrected that this isn't my meeting, it's the board's meeting. I'm passing out pertinent information related to the approved agenda, which was investigation. I did an investigation. These guys are saying, I'm not gonna call them liars, because I'm not going to. But they said they did an investigation. I did as well. Their investigation led to no wrongdoing. All, all the claims of former clerk were wrong, they were errant. She handed out for the people here. This tells a little bit of a different story.
If it's coming from the board, it would need to have been approved by the board before you distributed it.
Here we go.
You should have put it, you should have shown us and put it on the table ahead of the meeting.
Keep talking. Let's go through this package.
No, Bill, hang on, real quick. You gave an impatient speech during the call to the public at the November 3rd board meeting, correct? It was over three minutes, all the good things you felt the clerk did.
It was all the things that I thought the clerk did.
All the good things the clerk did, yep. So if she was set up for failure, how did she accomplish so many good things?
Because she is a fighter. That's why good, good fighters can get knocked down a few times and get right back up again.
But then apparently not, I mean, within a year, you can be broken.
You know what? Chinese water torture, you'll break anybody with that.
Okay, I think that might be an exaggeration of what happened here, but.
I'm just telling you.
Okay, so you believed people were working to stop all the good she was doing. Wouldn't you stay and fight for the people if you truly believed in your cause? What I'll say is, you, you asserted that you wrote that entire list yourself, correct?
Exactly.
You stand by that?
I swear on a stack of bibles.
Okay. So what we're gonna do, don't have any copies for the public, but that's okay, they don't necessarily need them.
With Janine's help, and I did say that.
No, you didn't. No, you did not.
I did last time, I did last time, with Janine's help. I did, I said I asked her. Am I missing anything?
So that's not what you said at the meeting, but that's okay. We're amused at people lying at the meetings. Okay, if she didn't have it, if you would share hers. I seem to have come up one short. So in that, you will see the email that she sent you, and it follows your list exactly. Verbatim, keywords, the order.
This was my list. I asked her, am I forgetting anything? I allowed her to come back with this thing. She says, yes, and a couple of things that weren't even on here, she included in there. So I didn't get a chance to finish my list, but of course, just like my investigation, who did I talk to? The person that was out, out here fighting for the people, I talked to her. I believed her. Nobody here believes her.
So you just get one side? Uh-huh, I wouldn't say that.
Okay.
You just got one side of the story, then. You didn't want to hear the second. I'm just asking. You said you did an investigation. Did you talk to anybody else?
There was 20, there was 20 people here that had their three minutes. I haven't heard anybody's come over here and say that Janine was toxic and she's the problem. None, none of the people that worked with her in the office here, they had their opportunity. I didn't hear any of them say it.
They had their opportunity as well.
Am I gonna be able to speak at this meeting without being overtalked?
It's a discussion. You can talk anytime you want.
Okay. What I'm doing right here, I make a motion, I make a motion to terminate the contract and employment of Kelly Van Martyr, Township manager, with cause, effective immediately.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion.
This is cause.
I have a second. Better get a roll call for this one.
I apologize, sir. I didn't contract and include the term Kelly Van Martyr, and then what?
Her employment.
Right.
With cause.
With cause.
Effective immediately. And what I have cited with emails, screenshots of texts, back and forth between various people, mostly Kevin and Janine, what this, what this shows, we all know that the clerk has to retain materials, files, ballot machines in a secure fashion against tampering, loss, theft, what have you. Numerous times Clerk Deaton did her job, asking, where are the records? She's entitled to the records from the previous clerk. They were intentionally withheld for months, under the direction of Ms. Van Martyr, in writing. There are meeting minutes, phone calls, she was denied a raise because of this whole thing right here. This is admission to guilt.
She was not denied a raise. She requested to not ask for a raise.
Okay. Let's, we can go through, you guys don't have it, but this, this shows a text, okay? Then, secondly, not only was she denied records, which she is legally entitled to, and Ms. Van Martyr purposely made the decision with, with our IT manager to withhold it, there's a laptop in there with lots of files, information, software, that I don't know, it may still be in cobwebs. Repeatedly, she asked, I've got to have this cemetery software, I've got to have right to burial documents. She was not given that material to do her job. This is what I'm calling running out there. She's set up to fail right here. Then she repeatedly asked for a secure storage location, time and again, time and, you know when she finally got a secure storage location? In January, two months after taking office, and it's only because MHOG volunteered their closet downstairs in the basement. It wasn't through any action here.
Closet's on the first floor.
I went downstairs.
And that's not true.
That was the original ballot storage. The keys were changed on that prior to us taking office, which you stated was an accomplishment of the previous clerk in your list.
Sorry, again.
You stated that the previous clerk, prior to our taking office, had cameras installed and had the locks changed on the basement door.
Janine did that, and we were all here. It was before election. We made a big deal, because Bill Rogers was on the ballot.
Okay, so Janine's not able to do that before she takes office, so somebody had to do that for her that was in the building?
Okay.
And you're trying to fire the person who did that?
I am telling you something, I went down where those ballots were stored, and they were on shelves in Santa Claus bags. I could, I could have caught them on fire, burned them, everything, so the allegation...
But the door was locked, but.
After the fact, I went down there when former clerk was down there, and all Janine said was, those ballots were unsecure. They were unsecure.
Okay, so.
I will say that they are now.
But what your complaint is with the former clerk?
My complaint right now is the performance and negligence of duty of this Ms. Van Martyr. She knew that the clerk had a statutory responsibility and, and a right to those records. She withheld them intentionally. She knew that the clerk was charged with storing that material securely. It was months after until MHOG volunteered. I, I, I'm looking for an excuse.
So the ballots were securely stored, Bill. You know, the key that was on the lot, on the room that was locked in the basement, guess where that lock is now? On your treasured ballot storage closet. I moved it there myself. So if it wasn't secure then, it's not secure now.
Okay.
Who are we gonna blame that on?
Clerk Susie can fix that. He's the clerk now.
The keys have already been changed, but.
She withheld records, she withheld a secure storage location. That is my assertion, that is cause. That's why I'm asking, and a motion was made to dismiss her immediately. For these reasons documented right here. This is in black and white. I've got copies of emails, screenshots, and, and by the way, a copy of her job description that says ultimately she is responsible for directing, managing, and supporting all Township employees. She had unlimited resources, human-wise, she had months of time to get this done. It wasn't done. This is the law.
Okay, so you would like us to consider firing a 25-year employee of the Township that, with a piece of paper you handed us three minutes ago?
Sort of like when I got the resumes for everybody one day before. Sort of like that.
One full day? Okay, well, one full day is a little different than three minutes. I'm not sure if you know how many hours are in a day, but I do.
I'll tell you what, I'll give you a few minutes to read. It's an easy read. I typed it in large font and all this kind of stuff.
Okay. Type it yourself.
If you wanna, if you wanna go ahead and take a 15-minute break, that's your right, Mr. Chairman, to read through this information, but there is a motion, there is a second, and you have the right to call a recess.
I, for one, do not need the time to read this.
I do not either.
Don't even care.
I absolutely care.
Do care. Absolutely do care.
And then.
I haven't actually seen you in the office enough to formulate an opinion on the performance of the manager.
Hey, I don't have a desk here, Kevin.
What's that?
There's no requirement for a trustee to come in here. I don't even have to pick up my mail. I'm here at the meetings when I need to. I do my research, I ask my questions, I do my job. I'm trying to do my job right here.
The fact that neither you or Candy bothered to even take one moment to talk to...
The fact that somebody disobeyed the law.
I'm speaking. The fact that neither one of you bothered to take any time to walk into this Township Hall, talk to myself or any of the staff that works here, you could have picked up the phone and called me, or anybody on staff, and you didn't bother to even attempt that once.
These are the laws. I remember going down to that basement, too. Those bas, those bags were in a, like, in a big pile in one room. There was another room, they had, done by the previous clerk.
Okay, Candy, did you listen to trustee Ryber suggested, the former clerk got those ballots secured before we took office?
Once again, Candy gets cut off.
Do you acknowledge that to be his statement?
Kevin.
Okay.
Can you just cut her off? Let her speak. She's got a seat at this table.
Which you did to me. Yeah, you just did to me, but that's okay. Speak away.
Well, it, it took a lot of effort for her to get it like that. She was very frustrated that it took so long, and even now, half of them are in that closet. There's a, there's a bunch more that are in another place. They gotta be in one area. I went down there, and one of the third areas.
That's a false statement, so you're really gonna have to clean things up, okay? I'm not gonna allow you to sit here and lie. But the ballots were, according to Bill, the ballots were secured before Janine took office. So it was, is Bill lying, or is somebody else lying? Just tell me who's lying. I, I don't care. I just need to know.
I'm sorry, but inside here is evidence, right? Kelly said is evidence. Janine said I need all the keys. The keys were relinquished. She gets locked out of her office in December. I need keys. Kelly says, I don't have keys. IT manager says, I don't have keys. Good? That's about, that's about the right response. Lo, in February, they're looking for making sure that the main conference room, this room, and the clerk's office is secure, but they were preparing for early voting. They wanted to put the ballot machines in this room so that they didn't have to move them in and out nine times in a row. Turns out, Kelly, I'm looking for keys, you have a key. She hands her a big key ring.
You've totally lost me. There was no early voting after we took office.
She was preparing, making sure that the facilities, she was making a plan. Do I have to move the ballot tabulators in and out of this room every single night? Where am I gonna move them to? Where do we have room? The big conference room. This room would have to be secure. She was, again, she was doing her job. She wasn't waiting till the last second. She was preparing months in advance to make sure this equipment was secure.
Okay, so you're just telling us that you lied on your list that she had the ballots secured? That's all I need to know. I need your answer.
She had additional keys.
Were you correct or incorrect when you said that the ballots were secure before Janine took office? That is your direct statement.
Janine took, took, I don't think that those ballots were secure until she had a lockable room with nobody else with a key to it, or the clerk's department.
That's not what you stated in your list of her accomplishments.
Quit twisting my words, Kevin.
I'm not twisting your words, Bill.
If you want to, if you want to argue these, I did the investigation. Okay, I did it.
This is the investigation into what you said, Bill. Made sure tabulators were rock, locked in rooms and had cameras installed prior to our election. This is a direct quote from the transcript of what you said. Is this, did you, she relocated unsecured ballots to a locked storage area. Are you now saying that is not true?
Where is this at?
This is in yours. I've handed it out to you. This is your statement. This is the transcript of what you said.
Kevin, Kevin. You guys can't see this because he's being obstinate about this. This is what he's doing.
He's reading from right here.
No, I'm actually asking you get permission from the board before you distribute materials that are supposedly board-issued. That would be proper protocol.
December 11th. Sorry, Kevin. Wasn't trying to give everybody a hard time. I'm just so frustrated with that place and all these wasteful laziness. I've been trying to get a space since I was elected on November 20th. Wow, this is December 11th. She doesn't feel she has a secure enough spot. Kevin, no need to apologize to me. I thought you were just calling for some action. She was. I'm with you on the highly averageness of a lot of the staff. And yes, nobody there is on the something-something plan that I had to get out. You are doing the right thing for sure, cleaning up after a 30-year mess.
Yep, I've supported the clerk every moment I had.
You had months to support the clerk.
So the key to her beloved locked ballot room was on the other room. So are you saying that it was not secure when it was on the other door?
Time to speak. This is discussion. We all need an opportunity to speak.
Todd, if you would like to speak?
I'm trying to maybe call some order to this dais as it seems that it's getting a little off the chain. So we need to hear each other's words and have a moment to process them. I know there's a lot of passion up here, but everybody's just gotta take it down a notch, please. It's the people's house.
I agree.
If we need, if you're ready for a roll call, we do a roll call. If you want to have further discussion, we'll have further discussion. You tell me.
It doesn't sound like not everybody on the board even needs to read this package and consider it. So I've made my points. It's all here in black and white. You guys can take it home and eat popcorn to it. But we do have a motion and we have a second.
Okay. Clerk Susie, may I get a roll call? Yes being that you would prefer to fire our manager, no being that you are not going to fire our manager. Correct, Bill? Your motion?
Yes being you're gonna uphold the motion to immediately terminate with cause. Immediately, yes.
Ryberg?
Yes.
Hovarder?
Yes.
Hunt?
No.
Walker?
No.
Susie, no. Spicer?
No.
Okay.
Everybody that just voted no is complicit.
Okay, that's fine.
That's what it is.
Well, we seem to have plenty of time for your further investigation.
My investigation stands on its own.
Okay, you haven't acknowledged the lock.
I'm sorry.
The ballot room that you say was unsecure. Anything that happened before we were elected is not on us, is not on Janine, is not on anybody but prior staff, prior elected people.
Let me put that point to rest then, Kevin. Again, with photographs, and you guys can't see this out of here. This is a set of master keys that was discovered. They were in the possession of Ms. Van Martyr. This was in February.
Okay, those did not work, the key to where the ballots were. That was a brand-new lock purchased at Home Depot and installed by me.
That key unlocked her office. She locked her keys into her office, and she was concerned that she thought-
Isn't her office a secure storage for records?
She thought that, so the ballot room downstairs and the voters' room upstairs were both keyed the same. Janine thought that her office and the deputy clerk's office also were keyed that way, but they weren't. There was a master key. All the interior office doors operated on the same key.
I find it highly irregular that it was so secure that MHOG had to volunteer two months after a place. Then she asked, "Can I have a security put over that closet?" Which the board complied with, and there was additional security. Here's how this should have went. Congratulations. It's November 20th. You're the new clerk. What would you like to do? I need the records, and I need a secure storage place. On November 20th at noon, she has both.
And she did. She had a secure storage space.
Really difficult, obviously, to sit here and hear a lot of accusations fly my way. And I do publicly, I guess, want to take an opportunity to clear that space, starting with the ballots. It's even included in here that even prior to Janine taking office, she had requested for us to implement some security measures. She asked for a lock to be put, separate locks to be put on the doors, which we implemented under a former leadership. I personally and the facilities director made sure that security cameras were placed, locks were put on doors, even before she took office because we saw the benefit that she saw to making sure that that happened. So the voting secure room was locked separately. Janine also thought when we did that that we locked the deputy clerk's and the clerk's office, which was not what happened. When she came in, those doors were not locked separately. We also had gone all through the office to make sure that everyone handed in any keys that they had to any of those rooms so that we knew that all of the keys were separate. What Janine didn't realize is that her office was on those keys, and I don't think that she thought it was a separate lock, and it wasn't. To get to her computer. So Paulette Scolaris, the former clerk, was due a new computer in the fall. We decided rather than give the outgoing clerk a new computer, that we would give the new clerk the new computer so that she could set it up how she wanted to. Put her own, you know, files on it, set it up her way. That's how I would have wanted it, so that's what we thought would be best to do for her. We also put on that computer links to where we believed all of the clerk's records were stored. There's a clerk's share file on the server, also a clerk's share file on the server. Tabitha, not Tabitha, sorry, Tara Brown, who used to work in the clerk's office, streamlined their server files and put everything into those two locations for the clerk's office. We made sure that she had links to where we believed all of the records that she needed to do her job were located. We also, you know, none of the files in her office changed. The only thing that changed was the old clerk's computer left. The new one went in, and we did put access to what we believed was everything that she needed. Now, it turned out the old clerk had things on her computer that were necessary, and so as a result of that, as soon as we discovered it, we made it available. But there was never, and I did, I cried to Janine. I told her that I was so sorry that her coming in here wasn't perfect because our goal, I've never welcomed an entire new board of people. It was a ton of work, and we really, really wanted her to succeed. We had many, many years with the clerk that frankly was very difficult to work with, and we tried really hard to give Janine all of the tools that she needed to do her job. The staff here is wonderful and outstanding, and I'm disheartened to think that people who don't know my character, who haven't even taken the time to meet me or get to know me would think that I would maliciously ever attempt to prevent her from being successful. We all win when we have a successful government. I live here. I need my clerk to be good and understand the rules and to be successful. This was never anything malicious. It was us all doing our very best to make sure she had what she needed. In terms of storage space for the ballots, when she came in and she indicated she wanted to get those ballots in a locked space, the first thing she did was say that she wanted to relocate the assessing department's records and put her stuff in there. We talked to the assessing department about that. They indicated that they've had a lot of water damage and flooding in their room. So then we looked at putting the ballots and building a room within the manager's and the treasurer's room. We got quotes from different vendors to build rooms within there that would make them secure. Of course, that takes some time to get them to come in, give us quotes, submit them to us. The quotes came back really high. So then we looked at a lot of different options. The supervisor and I both talked to Greg Teter, our utility director, about this storage room that was upstairs. I know that Janine was frustrated that it took a while for us to secure a location, but it wasn't because we weren't trying. We were looking at lots of different options, different scenarios, trying to be mindful of how much of your money we spent to do it, but also recognizing that it was critical that they be stored in a secure space. All the while during all of that, the ballots were in a locked room. That room that they were in had a lock that was installed by the township supervisor. The only person who had access to that room was Janine. So it wasn't like for that period of time that we were choosing which room for them to go in. They were just sitting there unsecured. They were locked the entire time. As soon as we realized we had an issue, we worked really hard to solve it. And I would just, I mean, I would be happy to talk to anyone who has any questions about my performance or what I've done here. I guess that's it.
Thank you very much, Kelly. So I will say to the non-clappers among us, would you like us to come to your job and scrutinize you in the way that you have scrutinized Kelly without speaking a word to her? I will gladly do it.
Thank you so much, Kelly, for clarifying on those items. And that right there is exactly why I am so disappointed that the people willing to sit here and publicly disgrace, try to disgrace Kelly and attack her like this in a public meeting is so disappointing that you couldn't even pick up the phone and talk to Kelly. Clearly, I mean, someone said there's two sides to every story and something in the middle. You know, you cannot just take one side of a story and believe it as truth.
So are you aware that nobody filed a hostile work environment claim with HR? Nobody. That would be the first thing that would trigger a full-blown investigation.
This is what's happening, the diversion.
There's no diversion.
Listen.
What do you think is being diverted, Bill?
Kevin, this is not about the behavior of the employees here, the behavior of Janine Deaton. Who said? She said. They said. Who said? Hostile, not hostile. That is not under debate right now. Because guess what? You're right. He said, she said, right? He said, she said.
You've thrown out hostile a few more times.
The motion was to dismiss Kelly because-
The motion failed.
That's, I know, but now we're getting off track here. But I want to tell you, she even said, "We thought she wouldn't have a computer." "We thought..." The law says upon demand. I don't care what you think. The law is very clear. The clerk demanded the records. As I said, by noon, she should have been given the laptop, all the contents of every file cabinet. That's company property, township property.
She had all paper records. She had all paper records at all time on day one.
Just, I would submit to you, I said this exactly to Janine. You know, in a year where I did almost everything right, I onboarded an entire new board, I worked so hard to ensure your success. Was there, did we make a slight misstep? If I could go back, do I wish that I would have done things a little bit differently? Yes, 100% I do. I wish that I could have forced, had the foresight to identify every little thing that she would have needed. I wish that I would have scrubbed personally Polly's computer to make sure that everything on there was handed over. I'm not perfect, and I'm happy to admit that to every single person in this room and watching at home. I made a misstep, and for that, I deserved to lose my job. As no one in this room or at this table ever made a mistake or wished that they could have done something differently. Having hindsight, it's unfair to be chastised over one thing that was wrong in a million things that were right.
This was a cemetery program, by the way.
Is the clerk responsible for maintaining and running that?
Yep. When was the last time the file was opened, Bill? Do you know? 2019.
It's not my job. Not my job.
It's not my job.
It's the clerk's job.
It's the clerk's job, you know? And the clerk sure did try to, didn't she? But it was on a laptop. It was withheld.
A file hadn't been opened since 2019, Bill.
Had you given the computer to Janine on day one, you would have found out. That's the, that's it. This is black and white. I'm not debating who behaved, who misbehaved. That's not what this is. The investigation is to take some action. There was some violations right here. This is the law. It took a long time to get this stuff to- You want to know what? Go over and find somebody's office that is secure, move their desk out into the hallway and put the stuff in their office and change the keys. That's creative thinking. That's in a hustle to obey the law.
Except it didn't need to be done because they were in a locked room in the basement that only the clerk had access to.
And we did suggest that. We suggested that she put everything in Tabitha's office because it did have a lock. She didn't want to do that. We also suggested that we could build cages within the clerk's storage room in the basement that would be secure and locked. She was not interested in that. So we did try to come up with quickly implementable solutions to the problem. They didn't meet her muster, and that was fine. We continued working until we found a solution that did.
It is absolutely untrue that staff did not help with this. There was help all along the way.
Staff did help hold on to that computer.
And so if February 6th was the day that she received all of the information that was on the former clerk's computer, it is now November.
It was November of 2024, and it was February until she received it. Three months. Not tomorrow, not next week, three months.
But it's now November. How did that continue to prohibit her from being able? Like, how did that continue to push her out? If she got what she needed in February, and it is now November, why are we talking about a tribulation that happened in February?
And again, a mistake was made, and everyone's human, and mistakes happen. You know, I thought we moved on from that.
To hear you tell it, everything was going great. She accomplished so much, which I agree with, by the way.
Kudos to her.
Absolutely, and I've given them at every turn.
And I helped immensely in many of the things you listed in her list of-
Absolutely.
We've had our motion. We've had our second.
We had our vote. It failed. Okay, motion to adjourn, anyone?
Chairman, you have the right for second discussion.
Okay, we will have a second call to the public, and I will open it at 6:02 PM.
Hi, my name is Amy Ruthig. I'm the planning director for Genoa Township. I live at 2957 Botsford Road in Howell. And I've been sitting here listening. Oh, actually, may I start? I have been a 30-year employee of Genoa Township, and I have never, we've never had a turnover of six new people, which you're thinking, great. Kelly took her time, which she did not have because she was helping the public, special assessments, FOIA's, everything, doing the budget. And she took her time to welcome all of you to this new board prior to you getting elected, to educate you as much as she could to make you as knowledgeable as you can before you got into this position. So please explain to me how that is trying to get you to fail or to get the clerk to fail when she went above and beyond. And how this office works is the clerk, we don't do any of their job. We don't do the election because we're not allowed to. We're not trained in it, just like Kelly's not trained in it. The cemetery, we don't know what files she uses or what programs she uses. That is hers and her department. So if it got forgot, we just, staff probably didn't even know about it. So for Janine to be that, "Oh, I haven't received it since February." She had everything in her office that she needed. She could have come and asked staff, "Hey, where's this at? Where's that at?" I don't know why it took till February, but what is her excuse by saying she got pushed out from February to November? I have worked with Kelly for over 25 years, and for someone who is new to this board to not even come in and ask staff, "Take the time out to come in," instead of coming in and looking at the board to see what's gonna be on for the next meeting? Why don't you take the time out, schedule a meeting, come in and talk to everybody if you want to get the true story? And no, we're not gonna sit up here and talk bad about Janine. We're taking the high road. We're not gonna sit here and slam staff from your board table. We're not gonna slam an elected official who chose to quit all because of her deputy quit and her assistant decided to go to a new department that was not stolen. She decided to leave that department. That was not due to a hostile work environment because she's still in the building. So for someone to sit there and talk about staff the way you just did and to talk about Kelly without even talking to us, that's wrong. That's completely wrong. And you do not have staff's back who is supposed to be supporting you and protecting each and every one of you. Our faces are what the residents see when they walk in. They don't see yours. They don't see yours. They will see Rick's, they will see Kevin's, and they will see Robyn's. And they also will see Todd sometimes. And I'm sorry you have to work. You chose to run. You chose to be elected. You chose to do this work. And so if you're gonna sit up there and say, "I did my investigation. Here are the facts," and not talk to anybody in this office, that's asinine, and that is wrong. And I'm sorry, I have never spoke at one of these meetings before, but for you to sit there and bash that manager right there, who everybody in this department will tell you, "Oh, I'm sorry."
We have to cut you for time.
Okay, well, that was a clusterfuck, all right? If we would have done-
Excuse me?
You heard me. I said that was a clusterfuck. This whole meeting was. If we would have done what we talked about a month ago and actually initiated an investigation internally, we wouldn't have had to have this meeting the way it was done, okay? This wasn't difficult to do. There were a lot of accusations out there. I don't know if they're true or not. I don't, you know, the three months late on a computer, that doesn't sound like a good thing. But what happened in those February to November timeframe that Janine felt she had to leave? It could have been very easily handled, and then you guys could have reported it out to us. Instead, we have a lot of bickering back and forth. We settled absolutely nothing today. Nothing got settled. The staff thinks they did a great job, and they may have. Kelly thinks she did a great job, and she may have. Janine thought they did a shitty job, and they may have. So who knows exactly? Because you guys refused to actually investigate it as a group and report out to the citizens, us, the guys that pay your damn salary, what exactly happened here? Get off your asses, do an investigation, report back to us. Get off your asses, do an investigation, report back to us. No more of this type of stuff. Had it.
Colleen Quinn, four oh four two Brookstone Court. I have to echo everything Jim said and I'm still furious because we've lost our clerk. Sorry, Rick, I didn't vote for you for clerk. And this whole farce of how he was appointed and Debbie wasn't even considered or any of the other applicants is bullshit. Absolute bullshit.
Enough with the language, people. This is a professional uh meeting. Do you have to talk like this? Is this how you conduct yourself? Very, very, very ashamed.
Denise Pulicella, forty-two hundred Sweet Road. I would rather listen to my neighbor swear than listen to you, Kevin, embarrass yourself in this township anymore this evening. I have never in my entire life heard somebody who was elected to be a leader be snarky, unprofessional, rude, condescending, derisive. You have embarrassed everybody here. I am sorry I voted for you. You are supposed to lead. This does not happen in communities where there is leadership. I don't know what happened and I don't want you to investigate. None of you are mature enough or responsible enough to investigate this. Hire an attorney, an outside attorney, investigate it independently like a normal group and get it done with and stop infecting this township with this ridiculousness. Second, there is absolutely no way Rick should be appointed clerk. I don't know whose boneheaded decision that was. I don't like the way it was done. It was not done transparently and I'm extremely upset with the way that it was conducted. I'm, I'm not even speaking as an attorney because I can't even put enough brain cells together right now to tell you how much you did tonight was wrong. You can hand out whatever you want at a public meeting, by the way. He doesn't have to have your permission to do it. He can hand out a presentation. That's legal, okay? Also constructive discharge is a way to remove somebody if they feel like they've, can't work anymore. It's a toxic environment. Just because she didn't file a lawsuit doesn't mean it wasn't toxic. Get to the bottom of it. Get back to the work of the people of this township.
Hi, I'm Kim Lane, HR manager for Genoa Township. Sometimes it can be very difficult to separate personal agendas from the essential duties of serving the public. In today's society, it seems like people only want to find fault or a guilty party. Just because the clerk resigned, it doesn't mean that any one item or one person is at fault. In my HR experience, it has taught me not to read too much information into anyone's resignation. People resign from their jobs every day from, for numerous reasons. Historically, this was the first time Genoa experienced a nearly complete turnover of its board. And I want to reiterate that Kelly took on that responsibility with with integrity and with joy, even on the days that she did not feel it and met with each one of you. And that has already been said. Understandably, employees were apprehensive about a whole new board coming on. What began to happen was an underlying feeling of lack of trust for staff to do the right thing, make the right decision and or spend taxpayer dollars judiciously. As a result, it is human nature to be resolved or act defensively when after ten or twenty years of loyal service, it is implied that what was being done all of this time for the benefits of our residents was wrong or was, there was some sort of deliberate malfeasance occurring. In addition, it's easy for staff to feel caught in the crossfire as the current employees really had nothing to do with political or development decisions that dictated the changes in governance philosophy in Genoa Township. So although likely not intended by anyone as part of the change, inevitably there was inherent lack of trust between the board and employees. I want to reiterate that HR does not have authority over elected officials. I cannot recall any mention of a hostile work environment prior to the clerk's resignation. I know she was unhappy with how things were unfolding and the amount of work that came with a position that had many years of neglect. She talked with me about how difficult it was.
Yeah, uh Kim, I'm sorry. I have to cut you off. Thank you very much.
All right.
Uh Stephanie, you've been patient. Please speak.
Yeah, it's a bit disturbing to see all the clapping come from paid employees when you, you represent the taxpayers. I see a bullying environment evidenced by Mr. Spicer and Mrs. Hunt and some people who've been here thirty, forty years. Maybe it's time to go. If you've got a bunch of women that, employees that walk in here like this, like bullies at the last minute, pull up their own chairs, there's plenty of seats available, make a, no, let me speak. Use a disruption, use the F-word. Um that was to me presenting as evidence of what Janine had to put up with. And I don't doubt it a bit because I've worked in many office setting with snarky and petty employees. And if you women have been thirty, here thirty and forty years and you, and you didn't see it, well, shame on you. Um I don't care who claps the loudest, um but it's obviously going on or there wouldn't be this allegation because I, I, as an outsider, I'm a city of Howell. I don't come to many of these meetings. You look, would you listen to that? That's what Janine was dealing with, you know? And you started it, Mr. Spicer. Sounds like it is, ma'am. Is this a back and forth? Are you the bullies that Janine's dealing with? I, I guess, I guess they are.
Call to the public is to the, to the chair.
Well, tell your, tell your insiders that. Tell them that.
They were not speaking back there. That was somebody else.
They were speaking, ma'am. I heard it. Anyway, uh you guys are very defensive for people that ought to be very open-minded. And your defense speaks volumes to me. I mean, how, however, no one expected um the manager to be quote unquote, perfect. Uh no one's expecting that. We're expecting you to do your job, be transparent. The clerk has legal duties to carry out that affect voters. And even as a resident of City of Howell, that bothered me. You know, the, what Polly did or, or it was a mistake given and it was just a five hundred dollar fine. But statewide in Michigan, it's, we had so many fake electors and it's a very disturbing pattern going on. And, you know, I'm not a conspiracy theorist and I believe that these people that were pardoned should not have been pardoned. It could be going on here again, the way a lot of people believe. So there is a right to investigate this stuff. Um the bullying I've seen up here by the chair and I'm in charge type of thing. We'll take a look at a highly dysfunctional Tyrone Township. That's what it reminds me of. And there's some interesting dynamics, legal fees and lawyers' stuff going on because of mismanagement. So I suggest you take a good look at that. Yeah, you're public servants. So keep that in mind as you listen to your chorus of people back there, the.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Hi, Mark Sorrell, three, 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 Pine Ridge. Um I'm going to try and give some constructive advice here. Is um, as a business owner, I see a similar thing happen where people get, we, people get hired or elected and they come into a job and they may not be, they may not have the support that they need. So like Kelly, you obviously were the sole support, not the sole, but you were the one trying to get, you're like me. Where we hire a bunch of people and I'm trying to train fifteen people. I think something that more of a, a transition plan or transition slash training plan uh would help, especially when only one person does the job. Our rule at our, our place where I work is we always have two people trained on everything. That way if somebody's sick or quits or something happens, someone else can step in and either take that over or train the next person. So um if you need any help with developing something like that, I'd be more than willing to help. That's it.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Greg DeTerra, utility director for Amhug and Genoa Tyrone Township. I guess I just sit here tonight, just um I guess disappointed. Um I've loved working here for twenty years. I've devoted the better part of my life um to this place and the residents here. Um to hear somebody insult us as public servants that we're supposed to take abuse and beatings is not fair. I've missed my kids' birthdays um because of sewer breaks that I had to work on. I've worked all night. Um I've stayed up for two days to ensure people have service and don't have things back up in their basements. I, I've dedicated my life to this. Um I have, you know, to have to take anxiety medicine due to all the stress. And um, you know, I do this because I love it. Um we provide an essential service to our public, to our people. It's, it's what we do. I take very great pride in um the way our facilities look and investing into people's money. And um, you know, we all ran on being fiscally conservative and fiscally responsible. And this to me is not being fiscally responsible. Uh we're wasting so much staff time. I mean, the number one expenditure we have as government is our staff time, right? That's my number one on my budgets um is, is our staff. And I guess it's just, you know, wasting time on investigations and chasing tails and who's at fault and all that. It's just not productive. Um this place runs wonderfully. Uh I wouldn't have been here this long. You know, I'm a highly educated individual. I have a doctorate degree. Um I do this because I love it. I love serving the public. And um, you know, and I love all the people up here. All you guys have been great to me and respectful. I guess just, let's be respectful to each other. Let's come back together as a group. I think you guys ran all together with something that was united and, and, and making this place a, a great place to have limited development and rural character and, and those types of things. And I think we have to stick to those principles. Um that's what I want to do. I want to like serve the public and, and those types of things and not get into this petty stuff. This is um, this is just, I'm disappointed. Um I really am. Kelly's done a great job. I've worked with her for twenty years. I love Kelly. She's great. She's fun. She's dedicated. I've seen her here till ten o'clock at night so many times, um trying to make everybody here educated and things like that. Um I stand behind all my coworkers. Um they're great people. We've, we've gone through births and deaths and, and support for each other and gifts and it's, it's truly a wonderful place. And um I think if everyone just gives people here a chance and time, they'll see that. And that's all I want to say. I just, I'm disappointed. I, I, this wasn't what I was expecting tonight and I'm, I'm just, you know, I've been here so long and it's, it just makes me sad to see what, what transpired here tonight. So I hope we can all come back together in the future and, and start working together for the, for the common good again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg.
Hello. Um so everybody kind of aired their grievances tonight and their thoughts and, and everybody's a bit right, I'm going to say. And, and there's got to be some people that are a bit wrong and it's not just the one person who resigned. And we have a bunch of people saying, yeah, it was just her. She's lost her mind. She can't get along in society. Whatever it is, it's not true. It cannot be true. So now where do we go? You still need to do this in-house with every single person involved in the same damn room. So you're all looking at each other when you're saying what you heard and what you think and what you did or didn't do. You still have to do that or nobody's satisfied. All it is is certain people on the board think Janine's a just stupid and loser, doesn't know what she's doing. I think you probably did a great job and you did have your hands full, exactly. But that doesn't settle anything. Nothing has been settled tonight. We're still in the same place we were. So you guys need to come together and figure out how you're going to actually fix this so everybody in this room is satisfied. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
Can I just clarify one thing? I know it's been said a couple of times that, you know, I, someone said Janine was a jerk or.
No, I didn't say that.
No, but you, but I for one have never said that, nor, nor would I ever. And I am not aware of anybody doing that. So just to clarify.
Yeah. Good evening, Mike Woolbanks. I live on Russell, where we have no internet. But um, I'm in real estate. I'm an appraiser and work out of the office at RE/MAX with the Krug. My neighbor for fifteen years is Janine. I know Janine. I'm grumpy all the time. I get along with her. So when we have people saying, worked twenty years, I respect that. I totally get it. I'm just saying from my perspective, shoulder to shoulder, got along fine with her. Not one trouble at my wedding. And proud she's my friend. What it comes down to, in my opinion, as somebody who doesn't like to get involved with politics, Amazon. Janine was voted in because we didn't like how Amazon was handled. That's why we got Kevin in. And Kelly respectfully, I, I think you're great. I think your family's great. The letter that you wrote after the big meeting blistering us was a Jerry Maguire moment or, or whatever. Didn't seem characteristic and it alienated you from the people from my perspective. Home's back into industrial, doesn't matter, won't hurt the value. It will. It absolutely will. And I litigate in court on that and we can go to town on that anytime. It does hurt values. Kevin, we didn't so much vote you in, we voted Rogers and his disciples out. And without Deetons, I don't know that you'd be here. And uh that's my opinion. And all you who want to say otherwise, Kevin, you ran on eliminating Kelly from her job in the attorney. That's what you ran on. So when the other people back here, that's a fact. That's what you ran on. So you get us fired up, worked up, and then you switch midstream. Maybe you could have communicated to us that, you know what? Kelly's good. We could have sat down, had a cup of coffee and gotten through this. So I put it squarely on your shoulders. Also, unprofessional, I was um and my wife, we went to see J.D. Vance, Vice President of this great country. You jumped on the bus where we were sitting and proceeded to say bad things about Roger Deaton that were in the paper and so forth. Bad timing. You should know the audience who you're speaking to. And I think that's unfortunate that you did that. Um do I think Kelly's good? Yeah. Do I think the Amazon thing's a fiasco? And anybody who backs it, I think those of us in the community will continue to remove you. You've permanently damaged our, our community with it. We take it seriously. So I hope you start taking that seriously again. Thank you.
Anything further? I will close the second call to the public at six twenty-six PM. Uh I do want to make a statement. I am the guy that ran. Um I never said I would fire anybody. I said I would evaluate. I questioned the salary. I've admitted that I questioned the salary. Uh and I've admitted that after observing um the office inaction, I was wrong. I am incorrect. I was incorrect. I had to see it from the inside to know. My predecessor should have stuck up harder for the staff. He chose not to. And I have no idea where your accusation on myself saying anything about Roger Deaton comes from. I haven't mentioned Roger Deaton at all. So um anyway, with that.
We need to adjourn because we have six thirty.
Make a move to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose the same. Meeting adjourned as of six twenty-seven PM.